Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to welcome members and guests of the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Everyone should have some form of electronic device, laptop, to access agenda and other supporting documents for this meeting. There are copies of the agenda supporting documents on the table if you do not have a paperless access at this time. There are one action item and two information for the committee. Approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Vice Chancellor's report.
Thank you very much, Trustee Clark. Good evening, everyone. We have a brief report, mostly an update on the programs conducted by the Division of Student Affairs that have promoted the success and the wellness of CUNY students over the summer months. In late May, the Percy E. Sutton Seek Program commemorated its 50th anniversary with a gala celebration and award ceremony in the Great Hall at City College. Guests included Honorable Mayor David Dinkins. In collaboration with ACS Youth Matter, CUNY state-funded Foster Youth Success Initiative, is currently providing residents' life opportunities to 15 students at the Summit at Queens College and Dolphins Cove at the College of Staten Island. And we had a wonderful meeting with the city's foster care collaborative, and they affirmed what a really unique and historic opportunity this was. We're also pleased to report that for fiscal year 17, CUNY's Youth Matter budget has doubled. We expect to receive a minimum of almost $1 million to serve 70 CUNY students who participate in foster youth initiatives. In the student conduct area, on June 8th, in collaboration with the Office of the General Counsel and CUNY Act, we convene the university athletic directors and coaches for training related to sexual misconduct. Topics included Title IX, the concept of consent, child abuse, the Clary Act, and reporting responsibilities. On August 16th, we convene the residents' life, student, and professional staff for day-long training on topics including Title IX, the concept of consent, mental health and wellness, community development and engagement, and diversity and inclusion. In Student Disability Services, we're pleased to report that 21 CUNY lead students representing seven CUNY campuses were awarded Matthew Goldstein scholarships for high-achieving students with disabilities who have depleted their TAP eligibility. The ceremony was held at Queens College on July 26th at the annual ADA celebration and was attended by more than 200 members of the university community, as well as members of the Queens Legislative Delegation and students, again, from campuses across CUNY. J.J. Daniels, a CUNY lead student from Hunter College, was selected as the CBS Lights Camera Access 2.0 intern after a national competition. The CBS News internship program is designed for students with disabilities interested in pursuing a career in journalism, broadcasting, or communication. J.J. will be assigned by CBS News to one of its signature news programs, which include 60 Minutes, Face the Nation, 48 Hours, and CBS Sunday Morning. In terms of BMI programs, BMI completed an entrepreneurial spring semester of fundraising and development. BMI received $15,000 from MCU to provide two scholarships to BMI students. It raised $25,000 at the first annual BMI spring benefit, sponsored by the Campaign for Black Male Achievement, 100 Black Men of New York City, and MCU. And BMI also received a $25,000 gift from Citibank to assist with programmatic elements of CUNY BMI. Topping it all off, BMI, led by Jermaine Wright, formed a CUNY BMI advisory committee to help develop the future direction of the program, to provide and raise resources, and serve as BMI ambassadors. Board members include Sean Dove, the CEO of the Campaign for Black Male Achievement, Corey Fernandez, Vice President of Business Development and Member Relations at MCU. On mental health and wellness initiatives, I'm pleased to report that the Mental Health Service Corps was launched as part of Thrive New York City's initiative, a mayoral initiative, which places 10 early-career clinicians in psychology and social work at eight CUNY counseling centers. These clinicians will receive onsite clinical supervision while working towards clinical licensure. The clinicians will also provide direct services to CUNY students and increase counseling center capacity. The New York State Higher Ed Immunization Collaboration got a big boost from CUNY participation in partnership with the New York University Network for the Improvement and Innovation in College Health. Five CUNY schools have joined a coalition of 20 institutions, of higher education institutions in New York State, to improve best practices and provide leadership to other colleges and universities regarding immunization. Regarding CUNY veterans, Veterans Affairs received a 2016-17 Veterans Administration grant to hire three student interns to work on service learning, veterans' leadership, philanthropy, and outreach initiatives on behalf of all CUNY campuses and the veterans they serve. Our Veterans Affairs Office centrally collaborated with SUNY to develop best practices for CUNY and SUNY student veterans. A formal roundtable is being scheduled for Albany in 2017. Our Veterans Affairs Office also participated on New York State Assembly Speaker Hasty's Subcommittee to finalize military interstate compact for New York State children of military families. And we were really proud of Lisa Viata leading the -- she's a real thought leader in this area and really working to advance this initiative. Regarding USS, we had some big news to report. Joseph Waji has stepped down as USS Chair, and he's going to be joining the CUNY Athletics Conference staff focusing on program development and a real emphasis on NCAA and NJCAA compliance. So we wish him the best, and we're really grateful for his leadership. And we're thankful that Chica has stepped up and will serve in his stead for the remainder of his term. We've worked very closely with Chica over the course of this last year. She's a remarkable leader, and she'll provide very strong leadership to the Senate. So thank you for serving in that capacity. And finally, I'd just like to take a moment to thank CUNY's General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs, Rick Schaefer, in advance of this evening's presentation to this committee on the important role that student conduct under Article 15 of the university bylaws plays to our appeals process. Rick and his outstanding team in the General Counsel's Office are a remarkable partner and resource to us in all things, and we look forward to your orientation tonight. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Vice Chancellor Rosa. And now, for our continued -- we'll have Vice Chancellor Rick Schaefer now address the process of students' disciplinary appeal process.
Thank you. We have some new members of this committee, so for them, some of what I'm going to say will be new. We have some returning members of this committee, so you can view this as a refresher. And at the end of my presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about sexual assault cases, which I think some of this will be new for everybody. And since we have two, at least two, student appeals coming down the pipeline, which you will hear in October, and they involve sexual misconduct cases, I thought this would be a good time to sort of deal with that issue. This committee is a little bit unusual in this regard, is that we sit as a court of appeals in student disciplinary committees. Other universities handle it in different ways. There's a long tradition at CUNY for this committee to serve in this capacity. And for those of you who've sat on it before, you know it's a serious and sometimes somber responsibility, but it's also one that seems to work out well and, I think, helps us achieve substantial justice in dealing with what are obviously the lives of our students who have been subjected to disciplinary sanctions. So let me give you a -- I'm going to try to do this quickly. First, an overview of the student disciplinary process, then the role of this committee, and then some words about sexual misconduct cases. So the procedures for student disciplinary matters can be found in Article 15 of the CUNY Board of Trustees bylaws. And for those of you who are new or haven't previously used this tool, if you go to the CUNY's website, and you have a row of things at the top, and the top-left one says "About", that's always a good place to start. And if you click on "About," one of the choices is "Trustees." And if you click on "Trustees," you have a menu along the left-hand side of some documents that are readily available to you if you ever, you know, want to look them up yourself. One of them is a complete set of the CUNY bylaws, and then right below that is another document that I'm not going to refer to tonight -- well, actually, I will, on sexual misconduct, called "The Manual of General Policy." So the bylaws are the CUNY Board of Trustees bylaws. Rough sense, I guess, they're the constitution of the body. And then "The Manual on General Policy" is a compilation, in a fairly well-organized format, of all of the policies that the CUNY Board of Trustees has ever passed and are still in effect. And so you can look things up by subject matter. You'll see an index there. There's also a very easy search function if you wanted to find out something about student discipline. You just put in "student discipline." I say it's easy because even I can do it, and I'm really not good at this stuff. But anyway, that's where this is all can be found if you want further detail. So the way student disciplinary procedures work, they originated on the campuses with usually somebody making a complaint. It could be a student making a complaint about another student. It could be a faculty member making a complaint about a student. In rare cases, it could be someone from outside the university making a complaint about a student. And there's a process for looking into this, for investigating it. Depends a little bit on the subject matter. There's a special procedure for dealing with sexual misconduct allegations. Other complaints can be handled in different ways. For example, academic misconduct, cheating, may be handled as purely a grade matter, but it can also be handled as a disciplinary matter, depending upon the seriousness. So some preliminary investigation is done, and then, as a result of that investigation, if there appears to be a basis for bringing charges against a student, a complaint is drawn up. And there is a mediation process prior to the formal issuing of the complaint that can be followed, and the matter can be resolved informally. But if that doesn't happen, then the charges are served on the student, and the matter then goes to something called the Faculty-Student Disciplinary Committee. Every one of CUNY's campuses has one. They are made up of what I'll call a panel of students, faculty, and staff who have been elected by their respective constituencies or appointed by the president in some cases for this purpose. And they are headed by chairpersons appointed by the president. When I say the plural, because what happens is not every member of the larger Faculty-Student Disciplinary Committee sits on every case. They rotate through so that nobody is overburdened, although it turns out we don't fortunately have that many cases each year. But it's kind of a rotating pool of members who are hearing cases. And so, on any campus, they'll have 21 members. They consist of three chairpersons, who have to be either faculty or HEOs, six other faculties, six other HEOs, and six students. Each case is heard by a panel of five, consisting of the chairperson, again, either faculty or HEO, and then two faculty and two students -- two faculty or HEOs and two students. A quorum of three is required, and sometimes, because of people's schedule, you know, they may sit with a panel of four, but it still requires three affirmative votes to make a decision. The chairperson is sort of like the judge in the panel, is making some procedural decisions and making sure the process moves through expeditiously and fairly. The student receives a notice of hearing when it's ready for that process, and in the notice of hearing, they get a detailed set of the charges against the student. The charges derive from the CUNY bylaws. Another section of Article 15 sets forth the substantive basis for which students can be charged, which largely consists of a violation of law, federal, state, or local, unusual, or a violation of CUNY rules or policies. That's the more typical example. And the most common one of the set of rules or policies that is the subject of a disciplinary hearing are the rules on public order, sometimes referred to as the Henderson Rules. I've got to look up who Henderson is one of these days, but I believe it was a state legislator who drafted legislation requiring colleges and universities to have a set of rules like this. The actual rules weren't mandated by the state legislature, but the existence of these rules was. So I guess that was Mr. Henderson. And so the student gets a copy of the rules, so the student knows what he's being charged with violating, and other information about the process. Now, one of the things that's a little bit new that didn't previously exist before some changes in federal and state law involving cases of sexual misconduct, but in our case, we do it now in all cases, is that the complainant, in addition to the person being charged, who I'll refer to as the respondent, the complainant also has the right to participate in the process, and so the complainant will also get a copy of the charges. Both the complainant and the respondent are given opportunity to review any documents that the college plans to offer in evidence at the hearing, but other than that document review, there's no pre-trial discovery, if you will, like there would be in a full-blown trial. It's a little bit more like an arbitration process than a full litigation. If the respondent fails to show up for the hearing, and this happens with some frequency, there's sort of one automatic adjournment, and it's a new schedule is -- a new hearing is scheduled. Respondent fails to show up the second time, then they go forward with the hearing, even without the respondent being present. If a student withdraws from the college while charges are pending, notation is made on the transcript "withdrawn with disciplinary charges pending." General, the default is that these hearings are closed to the public unless a respondent requests them to be open, which is very rare, and is not allowed at all in sexual misconduct cases. And even if the respondent requests the hearing to be open, the chairperson of the panel has the right to deny that request if it would appear that an open hearing is likely to be, how shall I say it, disorderly, that there would be problems in carrying it out as an open hearing. It then proceeds to be what's really kind of a small trial. The college presents the evidence on the student's responsibility for the misconduct that's being charged. Witnesses are called, and they're asked questions, just, you know, like on TV. And then there's a cross-examination of the witnesses, and then the respondent has the right to call witnesses, and the complainant also can participate. Lawyers are permitted. My colleagues around the country, who are general counsels, find our procedures a little curious. They say, "Oh, you New Yorkers, you're so legal and lawyer-oriented." But frankly, I think our system is a fair system, and I think where students have so much at stake, it should be a full due-process hearing with the rights to call witnesses and cross-examine. And we have had good experience with this over the decades. I claim no credit for this. This long predates me. But lots of other colleges and universities have much more summary-closed systems with far fewer procedural protections. I'm kind of proud of what we have here, but I'm biased. I'm a lawyer, but I think it's a pretty good procedure. After the close of evidence, the Faculty-Student Disciplinary Committee deliberates, like a jury would, reaches a decision. And then, if the decision is that the student's not responsible, that's the end of the hearing. If they find responsibility for the charges, and we don't use guilt or innocence here, we talk about responsibility or non-responsibility. If they find responsibility, then they reconvene for a penalty phase or a sanction phase of the hearing to decide what sanction to impose. You know, they can range on the lower end to a warning or a caution of some sort, and at the highest level, there's a dismissal, sometimes referred to as expulsion, in between. There could be a suspension for a semester or two, and so on. Once the decision on penalty is reached, the panel issues usually a fairly brief decision on their findings, and then the student and the complainant, the respondent and the complainant, can appeal to the president of the college. There are three grounds for the appeal. One is some kind of procedural error in the way in which the process was conducted. A second would be newly discovered evidence that was not reasonably available at the time of the hearing. And third, and the most common, is that the penalty is disproportionate to the offense. And the respondent, of course, will argue that the penalty was too severe. The complainant, and this is a new part of the procedure, can argue that the penalty was too light. The president then makes a decision. If the ultimate penalty, as affirmed or decided by the president, involves a suspension of at least one semester or worse, then this -- then the student has the right to appeal to this committee, and that's where you all come in. The grounds for an appeal to this committee are the same three grounds that a student can appeal to the president: procedural error, newly discovered evidence, disproportionate penalty. Although we invite students to make a presentation before this committee when you hold your meeting, and sometimes they will come with a representative or a lawyer, this is not a new trial. You're not sitting as a new jury, as it were. You're sitting as a court of appeals with jurisdiction only to consider those three issues. Again, most commonly, the argument on appeal is that the penalty is too severe, too light, and you have the power to -- in the case of a procedural error, you can send it back for a new hearing, but in the case of an argument, which is the usual argument, about the penalty, you have the right to reset the penalty. And there's often a lively and interesting discussion among the trustees. When you hear these appeals, as I said, the student is invited to appear. He or she is invited to bring a representative or lawyer. When that -- and the college, of course, also makes a presentation. And then, when they have left the room, you will deliberate among yourselves and decide what you want to do. In advance of each of those meetings, you will get, from me, a memo sort of outlining the case and what the issues are likely to be, because they file appeal letters that usually set forth the grounds for their appeal. I try to be kind of a neutral guide and counsel to you in this matter. My first job as a lawyer was to be a clerk to a judge, and when the judge heard cases, I would draft a bench -- what they would call bench memos, because judges sit on a bench. And so we try to -- my office tries to provide you with a bench memo in each case. Attached to the bench memo will be a transcript of the hearing and all of the relevant documents, and it can sometimes be a lengthy package. That is the procedure. That is your role in it. It's not fun, but it's important, and I think ultimately satisfying, because you all sit to do justice to these students, and it's very important. Let me just say a few words about the cases relating to sexual misconduct. You will, as I said, I think the first two cases you're going to hear this year involve them, and I think these are the first cases involving sexual misconduct that we've had since the new laws went into effect and our new policies about sexual misconduct went into effect. I've got a long section on this in my memo to you, but I'm going to shorten it because some of this is only of historical interest. But essentially, both because of changes in federal regulations and New York State law, certain procedures relating to sexual misconduct cases in college campuses are now mandated, and our policies follow those procedures assiduously. And I've already summarized the procedures for you. Some of them were new because of these new policies involving sexual misconduct. I don't need to go back over them because I've already told you what those procedures are. But all of our procedures now incorporate the law relating to -- or the law requiring these kinds of procedures in cases of sexual misconduct. The one thing I want -- so there are a few, other than procedures which I've covered, there are a few new things that were introduced by the both state and federal law. One of them is that prior mental health diagnosis and/or treatment by either party may not be introduced, just not relevant, can't happen. Secondly, with respect to prior sexual history, which sometimes might be considered relevant, it is permissible -- it is admissible in evidence only if it involves sexual conduct between the same two people. So the fact that some third party not involved in the proceeding might be able to offer testimony that this respondent did the same thing to me under the law, that is not admissible, nor is it admissible that the complainant, you know, was known to have sex with, you know, somebody else. These are similar to the rape shield laws that exist in the criminal procedure, and they're designed to both protect the complainant from really kind of abusive cross-examination and to be fair to both parties. I misspoke. The past sexual misconduct by the respondent can be introduced. I meant to limit my prior comments to just the complainant. And then, perhaps most importantly, the federal law is silent, but New York State law, enough is called "enough is enough" is the title of the legislation that was introduced by -- offered by Governor Cuomo and passed by the legislature a year ago, contains a definition of consent that we are required to use and is now incorporated in CUNY's policy on sexual misconduct. And the definition is sometimes referred to as affirmative consent, sometimes referred to as yes means yes, as opposed to no means no. But it requires a knowing and voluntary and mutual decision by all participants to engage in sexual activity. Consent can be given by words or by actions, as long as those words or actions create clear permission regarding a willingness to engage in the sexual activity. Silence or lack of resistance in and of itself does not demonstrate consent, but other factors, both verbal and nonverbal, can. other factors, both verbal and nonverbal, can. The law provides, and our policy provides, that consent may be initially given but then withdrawn, and then it's no longer valid. Similarly, consent to one particular sexual act doesn't mean consent to another, nor does prior consensual activity between these two people constitute consent on a completely separate occasion. And then there are kind of the legal aspects of consent that you would expect to find. In order to be, to give consent, one must be of legal age, seventeen years or older. Consent is required regardless of whether the person initiating the act is under the influence of drugs or alcohol. And so it is not a defense to say, "Well, I I I was impaired, and so I couldn't really be sure whether the person gave consent or not." That simply is not a viable or available defense. Consent cannot be given when the person is incapacitated, term of art, a somewhat unclear meaning. It does not mean just drunk. It means incapacitated. Now, where the line is between someone being slightly sloshed and someone being incapacitated is really for the trier of fact to determine, in this case, the Faculty-Student Disciplinary Committee, but drunkenness itself doesn't mean incapacitation, and this is an important point. Incapacitation may be caused by a complete lack of consciousness, I mean, that's an extreme case, and in some ways, an easy case. It can also mean, you know, drunkenness to such a degree that the person really doesn't know what's going on. But as I said, being intoxicated in and of itself is not the same thing as incapacitation. So that's, oh, and then the final point is, if consent is withdrawn at any point, or can no longer be given, person passes out, then sexual activity must stop, otherwise you're engaging in sexual activity without that other person's consent, and you're clearly guilty of misconduct. So that's, I don't know yet the facts of the cases that you're going to be hearing in the next two months, because we're still working on writing up these memos for you, and so I don't know to what extent the issue of consent will figure in, but I thought we're starting a new year, and under new procedures, and our first two cases are coming down the pike, so I wanted to make sure you were you were aware of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Schaefer. You heard the report of both Vice Chancellor Rosa and now Vice Chancellor Schaefer, so you may direct your questions to either of the Vice Chancellor based on the reports that they gave.
You can stop me. This is, the first is a comment, the second is a question. There have been cases that have been heard where afterwards there was a challenge, a lawsuit, and and the documents that we had in this room and made notes on, we were asked to hold and not destroy. So I just wanna, I wanna put that out there.
I think one, there's been one case, there's been one case, and that is, we're required to ask you to hold documents.
Right.
I wanna assure you that if that, I don't think that litigation will involve any discovery because of the type of litigation it is, but I do wanna assure you that I will fight like mad to preserve the confidentiality of such notes. I'm required by law to tell people there's an ongoing litigation, you must preserve documents, because it's not for me to decide what's privileged, but I believe it's privileged and confidential, and.
That's, I think it's a good thing to know going in.
Absolutely.
The second question I would have is if you have someone in your family who has been sexually assaulted, is do you think that someone would have to recuse themselves of participating in that particular, those particular cases?
Are you speaking about this committee or the Faculty-Student Disciplinary?
No, I'm talking about this committee in here.
You know, I think that's, you know, so you are like judges, you're not like jurors, and judges, for better or worse, act on their own conscience when it comes to recusal. You know, unless they have an obvious, you know, "I've got a million dollars invested in the XYZ company, and it's a defendant in this case," then then you gotta recuse yourself. But if it's, if it's a kind of emotional, experiential kind of thing like that, I think you're guided by your own conscience. If you feel like you can be fair and, you know, weigh the case fairly despite that experience, then I think you should feel free to sit. If you feel like you may be influenced by that experience or by that, then by all means, say, you know, "I think I I shouldn't participate in this." I think that's up to your individual judgment. If that arises, and it could be related to a sexual misconduct case or any other kind of case, I would urge you to raise it with me in advance, and we'll talk it out a little bit. I'm not gonna give you the answer, but sometimes it helps to have a sounding board, because I've seen a lot of these kinds of situations, and by all means, let's talk about it, but ultimately, it's your decision.
I would, I just, in particular, for cases of quorum, you know, somebody shows up, and then.
Right, so that's why it's very helpful to know in advance, to make sure we have we have a quorum at this committee.
And we would have, as in before, some of this material is actually gonna be coming to us ahead of time.
Yeah, I usually get the memo at least a week ahead of time, and sometimes more. But now that you've raised this point, I'll try to get it to you even more ahead of time.
It's on SharePoint. Your memo goes to the committee members by SharePoint.
By SharePoint, yeah.
In the disciplinary hearing tab, and it's very important, you have to re-sign it again.
I'm sorry, I still live in the days when people got documents, it's right, it's on SharePoint.
Typically download the wrong ones.
Yeah. Good question.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions?
So there wasn't really a question, I think you touched on the questions that I had. It was really in response to your your report. So thank you for your welcome, and also J.J. Daniels that you had mentioned, he was actually a senator of mine when I was president of the Suharam Ora Hunter, so, and he bragged about his internship, and I'm like, "What is he talking about?" So it's really good to see that it came from this program, and you brought back good results. So also to you, welcome as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments? If there are no other comments, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
First meeting.